Our meeting is open. Please stand, say. Monday twenty seventh of May. Devonport City Council acknowledges and pays respects to the Palau Pakinah people as the traditional and original owners of Latro Wita. And continuing custodians of the slave ownership agenda. We also acknowledge and pay our respects to the Tasmanian Aboriginal elders past and present. Item one is apologies. We have one from councillor Moore. And good to see my councillors here, thank you very much. Item two is declarations of interest. If I could have any of those please from my councillors. That's me. Councillor Shane?
Item five point four, Strata Spin Policy. I work in the Strata industry, won't be there in a moment.
Thank you.
Uh yes, Mayor, item four point two.
For Murphy?
Yes, um I have and 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 have been occasionally engaged in my professional capacity as a real estate consultant. But yeah, I will be leaving the room.
Thank you. Member councillor Martin?
Mayor, item five point three, I have to leave the room. And item six point one, which I'll be staying in.
Thank you. Councillor Barney?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh item number five point six. Uh my son's currently a member of the Denvote Junior Football Club, Yoski. Um I'm not sure what that means. He'll never make play, hopefully a demon, um but I'm just staying in the room. I take my judgement.
With the name like Barney, you can think of you being a demon.
Thank you. Any others? Councillor Snow, thank you. Um all persons in attendance so advised that it's council policy to record council meetings in accordance with council's digital recording policy. The digital recording of this meeting will be made available to the public on council's website for a minimum period of six months. The meeting will also be livestreamed on council's YouTube channel. Item three is procedural, so three point one is confirmation of minutes of bucket of removal of the written motion, please.
Same there.
Thank you councillor Murphy. Second, councillor Martin, thank you.
Councillor Murphy, as you've already stated, Mayor, it is me, any procedure?
Thank you, councillor Martin.
Uh nothing, thank you.
Thank you. Any further comment? Councillor Murphy, to close?
Consider it closed.
All those in favour?
Aye.
Against? Carried unanimously, thank you. Uh three point two is public question time. So three point two point one. Is responses to questions raised at prior meetings. If I could have a mover of the recommendation, please.
So moved.
Thank you councillor Murphy.
Second.
Councillor Ennis, thank you. Councillor Murphy?
Uh the responses are there, if we're going to say that.
Thank you, councillor Ennis.
Nothing further, ma'am.
Thank you. Further comment? Councillor Murphy, to close?
Consider it closed.
All those in favour?
Aye.
Against? Carried unanimously, thank you. Three point two point two is questions on notice from the public. Uh we have uh questions there and responses and the recommendations there, if I could have a move of place.
So moved.
Councillor Barney, thank you. And councillor Murphy, councillor Barney?
Thank you, ma'am. Uh the questions and responses amended, I think it was a very thorough and well thought out question and I think the responses are covered, those adequately.
Thank you. Councillor Murphy?
Uh nothing further, ma'am.
Thank you. Any further comment, questions? Councillor Barney to close, please.
Consider it closed, thank you.
Thank you. All those in favour?
Aye.
Against? Carried unanimously. We're on to three point two point three, which is questions without notice from the public. Um so if there's anybody in our public gallery tonight that would like to come up and ask a question, please do so. Mr Jenny, thank you. Nice to see you tonight.
Thank you, uh Mayor. My name is John, this is Jenny, twenty forty uh Watkinson Street, Devonport. The print on the screen behind you is now readable. Thank you.
You're welcome and we appreciate you asking the other night. It was very small. There's been a lot of work done. Thank you. Mr Warren?
Hi there. Shane Warren, unit two one thirty four North Business Street. And contrary to councillor Damien Barney's distribution comments, Mayor, my answers, the answers given to my question of notice are far and very satisfying. In answer one, benchmarking of the light facilities was used to identify gross flow area. It is my view on others, this is an unacceptable methodology for a fifteen million dollar government funded project. In answer two, the issue of why parking at the Abel was granted a score of nine out of ten due to the detailed plans of the facility are not considered relevant is also an unacceptable method. I'm reminded of the R three four eight test that my dad, Paul Harris, fellow believed in and encouraged my family to pursue. Is it the truth? Is it fair to all concerned? Will it build goodwill and better friendships? Number four, will it be beneficial to all concerned? So Mayor, this entire site selection process identifying the able as a preferred site has been based on a fundamentally flawed application of twenty one criteria, of which nine, I think nine require detailed plans of the site and the building to determine a score. The community has been deceived and Mayor is CEO, you're obliged to require an independent review of this current debacle. Are you prepared to do so? But yes or no?
Well, I, you're asking my opinion. No, I don't, I don't believe we should. But you're only asking me and I don't make the decisions on my own, do I?
Well, you're the CEO.
You know, you know how worked you used to work here.
Aren't you CEO, CEO of the organisation?
I'm the mayor. I'm not a CEO.
Who is?
There's a general manager next to me. Okay, you know, you, but you, I'm the mayor. I, uh we, we work as a councillor together and we make decisions together.
Well, you need to review some of your decisions, Mayor, because you've certainly made some fundamental errors. And just, I should go back one, one step.
That's in your opinion, Mr Warren.
Well, did you, if you care to read those twenty one criteria and which, nine of which require detailed plans, it's quite clear.
Yeah, I understand.
Plans to give that score, nine out of ten.
I've read all your letters.
You want to read them, you have to read them.
You want me to write them again? I'll read them again. Thank you. Anybody else from the public gallery who'd like to come up at the moment? Hello, how are you? Good. If you can come up and just state your name and address.
Lovely people, I hate your job, it would be too hard. But um
Your name and address?
Vicky Ward, W A R D, and I live at three Woodland Grove, Tugger, Tasmania. I just wanted to speak about um applications and destruction of areas that are environmentally worthy for Tasmanians and people in Devonport, like Devonfield, for example. Now, obviously I've sent a letter in and explained that, you know, it's not just about housing, it's about people's brains, people's ability to get out and about in an area that helps them become and it's about preventing the loss of specific species, both tree yabby, swift parrot. We use those trees, for example, to actually fly around from the mainland where they come down here for our seasons. Um I appreciate that it's, you know, people think housing is far more important, but you know, and I can see, of course, we have two real estate agents in here on council, but, you know, reality is we need to think about the future of us as humans. And that's not happening.
So Miss Ward, do you have a question for us? Because this is your opportunity for question.
Yeah, question is, what are we going to do about changing that concept of allowing the destruction of Devonfield to take place? Thank you.
Yeah. Thanks, Miss Ward. It is on the agenda tonight as you know. Thank you. Any further questions from the public? Thank you. Uh three point four is notice of the motions, whether there are none. Uh item four is planning authority. Uh council will intend to act as a planning authority under the land use planning and approvals Act nineteen ninety three for consideration of agenda item four point one and three point two. So moving on to that, item four point one, the one thirty three Middle Road, Martin Jeter. Uh we have all the information in front of us, the recommendations there, if I could have a move of place.
So moved.
Thank you councillor Murphy. And a second of place, so second. Councillor Gorchinsky, thank you. Councillor Murphy?
Uh thank you, Mayor. This particular agenda item is their consideration after consultation with Tasmanian Planning Commission. Um obviously, council uh in, in twenty twenty two certified a draft amendment uh in the concurrent planning application, um which is attached into this report. Uh as part of that process, Tasmanian Planning Commission rejected the above mentioned draft amendment and directed planning authority to substantially modify draft amendment under section forty eight one, certificated by of the name is of Lu. We've done that. So this report now is to endorse uh that action. Um and I see no reason as to why we shouldn't support the recommendation as it is.
Thank you. Councillor Dolchinsky?
Is um this started prior to me being on council, but can see that the paperwork and discussions have been the whole way through. Uh I think some of it to be looking at where the environmental side, we're actually having more land that will be kept for environmental and open space. Um and as it's private uh property, they have the right to do whatever they want on it. They can put an application in for that development. This isn't an application for development, it is putting the, the boundaries or the rights side of them and you're getting more environmental um land and open space. So I can't see why we can't go with it.
Thank you. And further comment, comments? Councillor Shane, thank you.
Thanks, ma'am. Um a couple of things informed my thinking on this that I like councillor, councillor Dolchinsky sort of bit before my time and coming at the last minute. Um I noticed the uh planner's comments that no residential subdivision is proposed. Um the proposal would result in thirty three percent of the site being zoned general res. Um currently forty percent of the site's signed general raise with the remaining sixty percent being community purpose zone. Um when we say it's residential, um that allow the um community purpose zone allows for housing in the form of retirement village, residential care facility, breast bike centre or assisted housing or accommodation for staff and students on on, on the site and none of the land is currently uh protected through zoning. So I think there were the usages um for that portion of the site, but really understand and appreciate people's um desire to protect floor and fauna. Um it's something in Devonport that we should all try and be a good custodians of the land, but with this particular one, having read through documentation from twenty twenty two up to now, well, it seems like a fairly unsensible way forward to provide those extra services for our elders.
Thank you. Thank you. Councillor Hollister?
Yes, sir. Quite happy to hear you long enough to say. A lot of proposals come forward for this area. Um I believe this, the development's about seventeen acres of environmental land between Devonfield and going right down to where the crematorium is. There's been proposals passed probably over twenty years ago for these areas that have never actually been developed till now and I'm looking forward to seeing pattern very soon. Nothing further to add?
Thank you. Any further comment? Last, oh councillor Ennis, sorry.
Thank you. Uh yeah, the, I do think that as part of this, there is a reasonable or quite a bit amount of space that is um being allocated as open space or environment for environmental management. Um I think it all whilst it's not all going to remain as bush, it a fair portion of it will. And I think hopefully that will still give people the opportunity to um use the natural environment for all sorts of reasons, uh for walking, for just uh being part of the nature itself, which I understand is really important for everyone. So um and hopefully that uh that area will uh get even better than what it is now. Thank you.
Thank you. Further comment? Councillor Murphy to close?
Uh thank you, Mayor. Uh the, the report's very detailed and quite clearly demonstrate that there is um a significant opportunity for sustainable environmental management um and future development. Um so, you know, I think this is probably one of the most common sense approach with being able to uh preserve into the future uh a significant environmental management zone. Um but also provide the opportunity for much needed housing. So with that, Mayor, it's super closed.
Thank you. All those in favour?
Aye.
Aye. Against? Carried unanimously. Thank you. Four point two, we're moving on to uh one thirty six Vincent Street. Again, the information is on there and the recommendation is there. Thank you, Mr councillor Murphy, sorry. If I could have a move of place?
A move.
Councillor Hollister, thank you. And a second, councillor Martin, thank you. Councillor Hollister?
This block has been vacant for quite some time. It's good to see that it's finally going to get a, a development of again. I think it's um I'm surprised it's taken so long. Now, if I support the post.
Thank you. Councillor Martin?
Uh thank you, ma'am. Yes, um please, well, the proposal said there may be some contaminated uh soil there and there's a uh point there for it to be removed should they, should it be found, that it covers that on. Also, one of the uh representations in regards to privacy that uh there's a screen one point seven metres above floor level. Uh it's been addition which uh created for that, the sort of the neighbours and their privacy etc. So please support it, thank you.
Thank you. Further comment? From the table? Councillor Hollister to close, please.
Consider it closed.
Thank you. All those in favour?
Aye.
Against? Carried unanimously. Thank you. Thanks, Miss London. Uh item five is reports. Moving on to item five point one is the panel contract for our council places. If I could have a move of the recommendation, please.
So moved.
Councillor Barney, thank you. Councillor Ennis, thank you. Councillor Barney?
Thank you, ma'am. Um the nature of this report is pretty straightforward, I think. It's um another three year lease, which I think is a sensible way of handling um this sort of technology now, so we're not locked with um redundant laptops and computers afterwards. So uh there's due diligence by uh the tender process and I'm happy to accept it as is. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Ennis?
Thank you. Just, basically since three years is uh is about the right length of time. Uh get, and to use this sort of equipment that gets used all the time uh after about three years, they start breaking down. So three years is good. Always supportive.
Thank you. Any further comments on that? Councillor Hollister?
Yes, I support the recommendation. Um this council spent a lot of money on IT over the years and this is just an example of what we've done over the years um in the long run to save council money in the right place, get a bit of it as well. Good.
Thank you. Further comment? Councillor Murphy?
Uh thank you, ma'am. Most importantly, um the C one fifty uh procurement process ensures that only Tasmanian businesses um that are certainly qualified are able to supply the computers.
Thank you. Nothing further? Councillor Barney to close, please.
Consider it closed, ma'am. Thank you.
Thank you. All those in favour?
Aye.
Aye.
Against? Carried unanimously. Thank you. Five point two is the contract for one three five six domestic waste collection service. Something close to my heart. If I could have a move of the recommendation, please.
I moved.
Councillor Hollister, thank you. A second, uh second. Councillor Vilcinsky, thank you. Councillor Hollister?
It's um the development for health and waste management. Um the, uh some of our surrounding councils have had um fortnightly pick up of their garbage for quite a few years. It seems to work quite well and I don't see their new fake bins fortnightly be quite enough. So contracts will work as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Vilcinsky?
Yeah, just further to our thought pattern that for renewable and waste management, I think it's uh all going forward with what we're proposing further on in the agenda as our waste station. So it's our look at trying to minimise waste and landfill. So all good?
We certainly are. Thank you. Any further comment? Councillor Barney?
Thank you, ma'am.
I watch.
Uh sorry.
Oh, that's right. Oh, there it is.
Um now I think this is a logical progression. Um so through a bit of background, because we're moving to that fortnightly collection for our curbside waste, um it didn't stack up um economically to, for the council to run those uh garbage collection sets itself. So um going to the old era was the logical step. And hopefully, uh everyone gets used to that fortnightly collection and makes use of the Fogo bins that have been rolled out as we speak. Um the difference of what we normally go to curbside that can go into Fogo means that there should be real not, uh really no disruption to um that curbside collection.
Thank you. Councillor Martin?
Uh thank you, ma'am. Yes, I support the motion. Um the point is that we, as a council, as a custodian of our land uh and the future of our land is responsible on us to help reduce the land waste in our municipality and the introduction of Fogo bins is the right step. Uh I would encourage all residents to really concentrate on separating all their rubbish and their uh Fogo items and really give this a, a good whirl because it is about the future. We are custodians, we're taking care of our land uh for the future generations and it's been responsible of this government uh and local council to do this. Thank you.
Thank you. Further comment? Um I'll do just say I certainly am um supportive of us reducing landfill. That's what it's all about. And uh this is just one of the uh uh ways to do so, having someone doing the contract for us and we are modifying how people send their rubbish out. And if we can reduce landfill like they have at Central Coast Council by fifty percent, almost fifty percent already in the five years that they've been implementing this, I'll be a very pleased person. So we're getting there. Uh if I could ask councillor Hollister to close, please?
Consider it closed.
Thank you. All those in favour?
Aye.
Against? Carried unanimously. Thank you very much. Five point three. Councillor Martin is leaving the room for a moment, I'm sure. Thank you. Uh attended by councils of conferences, the recommendation is there, if I could have a move of place? Councillor Dolchinsky, thank you. A second, uh
Second, Jared.
Councillor Ennis, thank you. Councillor Vilcinsky?
Um it's good that um councillor Martin can go and it's worthwhile to bring what is knowledge back to Tessie, to Devonport. So I have no problems with um sending you on. Um yes, I mean, yes, that's it. Sorry, I was on the wrong one. It is with Mr Martin?
Yes. Councillor Martin?
That's right.
Yeah, yeah, sorry. Are you sit down? No problem. All good. Councillor Ennis?
Thank you, uh
Okay, councillor Martin's on, actually. Should push one. Not sure why they're playing up tonight. You're not having?
Uh thank you.
Thank you.
It's a really uh really good opportunity um to go and attend that conference like this. Um particularly, it's been a special one. Uh the opportunity to come back with uh different knowledge and um build connections uh with other people, uh other councillors around Australia, uh it's a great idea. So I fully support it.
Thank you. Any further comments? Councillor Hollister?
It's lost attendance several of those after years, which has been us, Mayor and Deputy Mayor. Um I'm always believed that if you don't go to conferences, you don't learn anything new. Um, I'm always believe that if you don't go to conferences, you don't learn anything new. I don't think they're very beneficial. Okay.
Thank you. Councillor May.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, I will be supporting the uh recommendation uh for the application of councillor Martin to attend, noting that um we do have sufficient funds in our training budget and to facilitate it. Um, it is worth noting, you'll also be attending, Mayor.
My word, I'll do this, you.
So we're looking forward to um to sort of getting two different perspectives of what's actually um.
Do you want two reports down? I thought I could.
Oh, I, 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 I'll visit you, provide your fellow councillors, Mayor, with the, you know, perspective or an update of uh what occurred at the junk, I mean, did I say, um, the conference?
Oh, the junk, that. Wow.
Um, yes, it's very exciting. The, the format looks pretty good and there looks to be some um, some very good keynote speakers, especially around some of the regional connectivity and services, uh specifically uh some of the more broader issues that the Tasmanian um local government landscape is facing at this particular point in time. Um, so, yeah, so looking forward to see what uh actually comes from uh that particular conference.
Thank you. Further comment, councillor Shen?
Yes, um, just following on from the um nurse's comments, I too look forward to a very detailed report from the three of you. I think we've got three guys coming in, the general manager, Mayor, councillor Martin, so yes, let's make some good time in the workshop to review what each of you learnt. Thank you.
And not share the love and spread it around, councillor Martin, going to different things and I could go to other things and that'll be good. Um, yes, and I certainly um chose not to go last year. Uh, I thought that I benefited from going to the Brisbane Conference, which was incredible, the mayor's conference. Um, and I wasn't as interested in the topics. This year, I'm very interested in those topics, so it will be very interesting. Uh, I will ask, did you have further comment? Councillor Hollister.
It's certainly an opportunity for the members that are going to meet with their local politicians while they're there, especially to push any programs that we'd like developed in the future.
I already have appointments organised.
Very good.
Thank you. Uh, I'll ask councillor Vilcinsky to close then.
Yes, sorry about uh, I'd already gone on to the next one, so I'm am speaking about the right uh attendance and and of course, you've got appointments already set up, so that's a positive uh step for us, so uh consider it closed and come back with a heap.
Thank you. All those in favour?
Aye.
Against? Second, Eric. Thank you. Well, yeah. Okay, so Mr. Alex, you? Uh, councillor Martin, come back into the room. Five point four is the strategy, state and the policy. I have the recommendation there, if I could have a move of please.
Same urge.
Councillor, uh, sorry, five point four. You're welcome. Uh, councillor Murphy has moved. You can, councillor Hollister, a second, uh. Councillor Murphy.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. This is just another step in the right direction for the Liverpool City Council with respect to ensuring that um its policy development is in line with providing the best and smoothest opportunities for people to do business with council in a transparent manner. That sums that up. Um, so thi- this policy uh submission has been brought about from the observation of our, our partners and dealing with developers and looking at making um this process a lot easier. So, um realistically, it doesn't impact too many people. Probably not going to be used, but at least it's there for guidance for developers.
Thank you. Councillor Hollister.
Yes, I support the recommendation. Um, the question probably to the planners, will we spare the assistance with the titles department, so it was getting their employees for those developments back sooner, rather than later.
Miss Larson, thank you.
Through you, Mayor. Um, the business of the titles office is very difficult for council has no uh jurisdiction over that, um and their timeframe won't be altered at all by this policy.
Sure.
That's a good question. Thank you. Any further questions? Councillor Martin.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Uh, just with the policy itself, just, um in the definitions section of the policy, under stage development scheme, it reads stage development scheme, the development of land in stages uh can compromise existing buildings and common property. Uh, just question the, the grammar in that in regards to, is that actually two sentences or should that be joined together? It's, um it's sort of like a definition, but then uh can be a bit ambiguous. I just have a question.
Mr. Martin, are you taking the?
Thank you.
Uh, through you, Madam Mayor. Thanks for your question, councillor Martin. I guess with certain luck, it isn't a draft policy this day, shall we update that to be all in one sentence and um tie that up?
No, I think it's. Yeah, have you got that response? I don't want these. You can talk. Okay. Thank you. Any further questions? I'm, I'm, I'm sorry, I will be a lot to get one just like, councillor Shen, sorry, thank you.
I just want a clarification.
Oh, sorry.
I'll be soon. Um, look, Strata is, is something that we could all sort of understand a little better. Um, if we work in the property area or if we're um buying or selling into Strata, um I welcome any sort of clarification or more detail on council's policies in relation to Strata de- development. And um I note the office's comments that the um policy is designed for by offices with greater assurance um and the ability to request additional work such as turning bays, under infrastructure, all aimed at safeguarding the interests of the Strata lot owners. That's, that's a big thing uh industry in protecting what owners do, may or may not be really understanding what they're buying into. Um, so well done, um, sharing with that to the council members.
Thank you. Councillor Hollister, you got a question?
Further question? Um. Which Australian policy does that affect? Where there's two units and both um electric motors for their units are on one unit and not on the other, not individual.
Pretty rare when they're building a unit, but.
Oh, it's not rare.
Yeah, through you, if I understand the question correctly, councillor Hollister, in relation to the electrical for a unit won't be affected by a policy night. All good.
Thank you. And you wanted a clarification or did you want to?
Uh, yeah, just, just with respect to um Mr. Martin's comment, the fact that this is only a draft policy, however, we are looking at taking it, the resolution is to bring it into immediate effect. Um, so can I seek as to whether the changes, well, the policy would be as in as written at the moment, or we will be expecting the changes as suggested by councillor Martin will form part of.
Through you, Mayor, the, um the, when you actually read the definition, it says stage development scheme dash development of landing stages, full stop. Nothing wrong with that. Can comprise existing buildings. So it's then goes on to what the definition is. I don't believe there's any change required to the wording.
And I agree.
All's good. We, you may close if you would like, councillor.
Consider it closing.
Thank you. All those in favour?
Aye. Aye.
Against? Carried unanimously. Thank you. So, item five point five, the Denver Soccer Centre funding allocation. Done a workshop on this, the recommendation's there. Thank you, councillor Murphy. A second, please. Councillor Martin. Councillor Murphy.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Uh, as you already have stated, there has been a number of workshops on this and a number of conversations. This is just a formal process with respect to um authorising the general manager to proceed to the next stage, uh which will see um the endorsement of this project into our capital works program and um and recognise this significant project as a um, a development project on air books.
Thank you. Councillor Martin.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Uh, yes, I agree with the previous speaker, councillor Mercy. Uh, in regards to um authorising the general manager, this is a great project, certainly puts a step in board, clearly on the map uh with this sport. Uh, it is on the map nationally and will give the opportunity to expand on that, uh hopefully when the A League is sort of to expand their licenses and to attract sport tourism further to this area, to our city. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further comment? Councillor Shen.
Thank you. Um, yeah, I agree with the previous comments, but I'd also make the obvious point that it's really important to have cranes on the skyline at the moment. Um, that's a positive signal for um the business community, uh and everyone that, you know, didn't want to go in places and there's lots of activity on the harass and lots of bullet works in high one.
Thank you. Thank you, councillor Vani. Do you want?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Um, as previous speakers have mentioned, there was a lot of um, lot of work put into this last year. I remember uh at our June meeting last year, we had really robust conversations about how we could both support uh this project and also the um High Court, uh Highball Stadium project as well. Um, so I think this is really showing, to use an analogy that's getting, it's looked at a lot, is that this council can uh walk and chew gun at the same time. Um, it did hinge on that funding commitment from the state government, but I think it shows uh the confidence that uh both major parties have in our city, that uh they were both on board for that uh additional funding that was needed to see this um project uh be fulfilled. And, yeah, four and a half million dollars is a massive investment uh into a very proud and successful sporting club in our city. Uh, I think, I've mentioned it before, that those FA Cup um matches on a cold Wednesday night is some of the, the best sport I've seen live um period. So hopefully we'll see some more matches there in the future and new states, uh new um grandstand. Thank you.
Thank you. Further comment? My, um I can't wait to see what we're hoping to find. We can uh keep going forward like we are. Looking after these different organisations, they're in sporting organisations, just for one. Um I, I can remember back in the day when we used to have the West Indies play cricket here. And we had, you know, Essendon used to come and play here and um I have a really great memories I've got. And it was fantastic. And then I get disappointed when we know that, uh, for example, the, the women were wanting to come and train here, but they, we just missed out. Um, and yet they said our facilities were brilliant, second to none. Well, now we're really got, they've got no excuse. Once we get all this done, we will be seeing um an incredible increase in what we can open our minds to. And I can't wait to see some major team coming down here and playing. It will be just brilliant and great for the region, let alone Devonport. I'm really Devonport. Councillor May, to close, please.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. It's um, it, it really is a um a real highlight, the fact that um to achieve the funding commitments, both federally and from the state, they will respect to our entire sporting infrastructure master plan, um that the um unanimous support that all of the codes have demonstrated has seen a result that's quite significant for them. Um, and very much the strikers were very much part of that, you know, they, they went out on their own. They, they saw some funding from the state government. And they then came to council to seek some funding from the federal government and then we've got a match that, so um, it, it's a, it's a, a really positive uh outcome for the community. And I too look forward to what the future brings with respect to what can be actually achieved um moving forward. So with that, consider it closed.
Thank you. All those in favour?
Aye.
Aye. Against? Carried unanimously. Thank you very much. Five point six is the Biopark sports facility upgrade. The recommendation is there. Uh, if I could have a move of please.
I moved.
Councillor Hollister?
Second.
And councillor Murphy? Councillor Hollister.
This is an up, an upgrade that's probably long overdue. It's a good example of um a renewal proj- project. And it's well needed and well supported. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Murphy.
Uh, yes, dear, I agree. Um, you, you know, the Biopark venue is very tired. Um is sort of now sort of again aligns itself with um the Sporting Infrastructure Master Plan. So realistically, uh it was good to see a number of different um tenures throughout the process. Um, and obviously a very competitive space, so um we've done quite well and made kind of um uh a, a very well credentialed uh builders within our local sort of municipality, so uh looking forward to seeing this completed and I, I'm now pretty confident that you will do a very good job when you cut the ribbon.
Will say. Thank you. Uh, further comments? Councillor Vani? Anything?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, continues along the same theme as, as the last um, last point is that against a, a one point uh six million dollar project to um upgrade and improve sporting infrastructure in our city. Uh, one that councillor Hollister has mentioned is probably long overdue. Um, the worst guard is it's out of that one point six, one point two was um from federal government funding. So again, more confidence that uh the work that this council does is worthwhile. Thank you.
Thank you. Further comments? Councillor Ennis.
Thank you. Uh, yeah, very, um, very pleased that this project's gonna hit since um being changed in those rooms in the nineteen seventies, it hasn't changed. It hasn't changed. I've been there quite regularly. Uh, coaching uh schoolchildren and so forth and using that facility. I'm really pleased that uh it's going, it's due for a um an upgrade and a bit of a tweak up and it'll be fantastic uh uh addition to our community's sports.
Thank you. Certainly is time for that place to be completely revamped, revamped and um they've been very patient with this, so it's not going to be rushed. Can I ask councillor Hollister to close, please?
Yes, I think this is important. It's also a good example of our sporting strategy plan. Um, it's obviously the major sporting precinct in the town, and this is just further up our stories. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll take you, uh, you, your closing. Thank you. All those in favour?
Aye.
Against? Carried unanimously. Thank you very much. Five point seven is the tenor for the Resource Recovery Centre. Another part that's close to my heart, so I'm really pleased we've only got to this. If I could have a move of please of the recommendation.
Same move.
Thank you, councillor Murphy. So, second. Thank you, councillor Vilcinsky. Councillor Murphy.
Uh, again, Mayor, this has been discussed at length and a number of different um scenarios have been put forward. It really is going to rationalise and modernise our um refuse sort of site uh compared to what it is at the moment. It really does provide the opportunity for people to um, you know, visit the transfer station and, and dispose of, of recyclables before entering in to go into landfill. Um, so again, it goes to that user pay model. Um, it, it's a big step forward in addressing the issue with the state government's waste levy. Um, which is sort of, you know, um, going to increase up to sixty dollars per tonne over a five year period. Uh, which is going to be a significant cost. So, anything that we can do to provide the opportunity for members of the community to to lessen the financial burden by providing that opportunity for them to turn up and, and dispose recyclables. Um, and, and get people thinking in that space. Um, so this is the first step in that process, so um, yeah, I, I encourage my fellow councillors to endorse the recommendation.
Thank you. Councillor Vilcinsky.
Yes, so I agree with everything um Murphy has had to say because it again is our, our step towards um lessening the landfill. Uh, again, the twenty dollars up to sixty dollars, I think a lot of people don't understand. It's okay to have. It's okay to have rubbish and just put it in the bin or take the trailer out and throw it away. But what happens to that rubbish? So it goes into landfill. So we've got to try and lessen our landfill and be, um. Innovative of ways of actually trying to get recyclable. Um, and, uh, people to think about their rubbish. It's, it can be used something, some other way. So, yeah, I endorse that as well.
Thank you for the comment, Council Evans.
Thank you. Um, cargo and recycling or resource recovery is a major part of our strategy. Uh, to save the rate payers money and it improves the environment as well. And so this, uh, this will fit just beautifully. So I'm really looking forward to it.
Thank you. Further comment? Council Shane?
Thanks, ma. I'm really excited about the larger and more accessible tip shop. The tips, tip trip on the weekend for me is one of my favourite things and I like checking out the tip shop. Um, it's great, but you know, with Costa winning, uh, at the moment, I think this is a really talented addition to the tip. So thank you.
Thank you. Council Martin?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. I suppose it goes back to the old saying, one person's rubbish is another person's treasure. And having a resource centre, uh, actually provides reuse providers. It's also an important option for those, uh, who are either chasing a bargain. Or for those who are buying necessities, uh, at a reasonable price. So I hope those, uh, disadvantaged in that area as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Council Martin?
Thank you, Mayor. Question if I can. Um, it mentions that council seeking a half a million dollar, uh, government grant. Um, as part of this project. Do we know when we might hear if it's a successful, uh, application?
Mr. Belchow.
Yeah, through you, ma. Um, seen quite a number of applications to the waste levy. Grant funding, so they're currently going through that, um, submission. Our submission went off, um, late March. When they're saying early in the new financial year, which could be anywhere between July and September.
Excellent. Thank you, Mr. Goshens.
Thank you. For the comments, Council Murphy to close.
Consider it closed.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye, aye.
The guys? Carried unanimously. Thank you very much. Item six is information. Six point one is the workshops and breaking sessions. The recommendation is there. If I could have a moment, please.
So moved.
Council Vani, thank you. And seconded. Council Shane. Council One, fine.
Fine.
Yes, thank you, man. Uh, it's in the, uh, in the agenda there, the workshops that we had, I think. Um, putting a Devonport show, no show day, holiday's gonna raise a lot of, um, interesting. Discussion within the community. I know I've had several people approaching to talk about that already, so. Um, be interesting to see how the cards line with that. Thank you.
Thank you. Council Shane?
It's me. Um, yeah, I can hear Council Vai's comments, but also, um. The discussion around black spots in telecommunications, I think is something we need to keep on. Um, and, and see if we can continually improve on behalf of the right place that, that need those to the communications.
Thank you. Further comment? Council Evans?
Thank you. Uh, yes, uh, my comments about the budget workshops and the work that's gone in, so leading up to the budget. That, uh, that we've done and thank you to the general manager and, and executive staff and all those other people who supported him. In, in sharing us, the, sharing up with us the information and the background for us to make the decisions about the budget. It, um, it's a big job. Um, it, it's a big. It's an important job that we have to do to try and ensure that we can keep our city, um. Uh, financially viable and moving forward and productive as well. And so, uh. That was, that, that workshop there was just a culmination of, um. Lots of work that we've done behind the scenes. So thank you very much to all those involved.
Thank you. Council Murphy?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. It's disappointing that I had to make an apology from the no seat. Because, um, I'm pretty sure the Devonport, I would love to participate in the Devonport show day holiday discussion, um. I had fairly strong views on that particular one. And, uh, again, I'll reinforce, um, having come back late last week. Uh, having the opportunity to catch up on the budget, um, workshop information throughout, um. The use of our eyes of the system and teams, um, has been very beneficial to, um. To, uh, to be brought up to speed with respect to where we're heading and, um, what's gonna be happening in the future.
Thank you. Council Martin?
Uh, thank you, man. Yes, uh, my point would be, uh, on resource sharing, uh, the opportunities that, uh. Are out there for council to make efficiency, uh, improvements, uh, along with sharing. With other councils in that area and what that may bring forth, uh, for the rate payers of, of Devonport. I'll also mention, uh, the budget workshops and the work not only done by the staff. And management, but also the input from the public. Uh, I think they're all taking their time to. Convey their thoughts on how, uh, we should be looking at our operations for two thousand twenty four, twenty five. And, uh, and with that board still leading and being prosperous. Thank you.
Thank you. Further? Comments? No, Council Vani to close.
Consider it closed. Thank you, ma.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Against? Carried unanimously. Thank you. Six point two needs nothing but portraits. If I have a moment, please. Council Shane, thank you. In a second, then?
Second.
Council Murphy? Council Shane?
Thanks, ma. Um, another busy month for you, um. I'd just like to talk, uh, to the, I'm regarding the U Taz visit. I was, she very kindly allowed me to tag along with. I was really, um. Really impressed with the way, um, you and the general manager, um, put a case board to the U Taz, um. Representatives we spoke to about, um, the, the growth in Devonport and growth down the centre of the coast and. Um, you know, I remember when I was on the train, even I was meeting with U Taz people wanting to promote a hub in Devonport, get. Some kind of tertiary presence. So I thought you both made a, a really strong case and presented it well. And, um, we'll watch further discussions with, um, U Taz perhaps at some other point.
Um, and you were very helpful having me alongside us. Thank you. No problem. Council Murphy?
Uh, thank you, ma. Um, hopefully you enjoyed the full Monty. Oh.
Hundred percent.
Uh, I've, I've heard very good reports, man.
Brilliant show.
It was, it's good. Um, and, and just probably an observation, I, I, I have noticed that, um. There's been a, a, a significant amount of media with yourself and Mayor Tiny Brumby and Mayor Cheryl Fuller. Um, we may need to think about getting in a uniform here because they always seem doing red and yellow. I'm thinking maybe a blue. Chapel or blazer or something, yeah.
Blue.
Represent difficult. Or for covers.
We wore orange last time. It was S E S.
That's right. It was S E S. I only volunteer back here. That's right.
Thanks for that. I'll, I'll take note. Any further comments or questions related? Council Evans?
Thank you. Um, I noticed you've had a, uh, visit to the Reflection Cafe and I've also realised that you've spoken with the senator. Uh, Gerald?
Yes.
Uh, has there been any positive news about, um, maintaining that service? Cause it's. Uh, absolutely essential for our area.
I agree with you. Um, uh, we have had, I've had quite a lot of discussions with different factors. Um, let, let alone, um, we have also met with Meecroft. Uh, to talk to them about, so I can understand where they're at. I'm not telling Meecroft what to do, but I just wanted to get making around it. Um, because there was a lot to understand because Reflections Cafe, um, council actually helped. Get that up and running. Um, wonderful staff member here at the time, Sharmaine Hardy, um, certainly had a lot to do with that. Um, I've been very proud of what we've had with that. However, it is run by a private enterprise and it's up to them. But there may be light at the end of the tunnel. We've got another meeting coming up. Um, yeah, uh, uh, Tammy Turner was helpful. She wanted to understand it all as well because she's at the federal level. So she can deal with the, um, centre itself, which is not really my area. But reason a cafe itself, there may be a possibility of us keeping it running, but it just depends on. Who would want to take it over? So we're just trying to find, find tune in. Thank you. Further questions? Council Hollister?
The fortieth year of Tasmania.
Alright.
I think that's fantastic that the volunteers have got that to the stage where it is. Council supporter over the years and hopefully will support them more in the future.
Thank you. Thank you for attending as well with Council Wilczynski. Uh, Council Vani, your hand is moving.
Yeah, uh, it is second, man. Um. I felt it was, so I'm going to hands act day ceremony. I thought you did a wonderful job with your speech, um. Great turnout from the community, um, so. I mean, it's not lost on people the significance of that day. And also to our, um, ground staff, like the senator, fantastic, really respectful. Um, and then as I was gazing at that, I noticed that directly underneath there, it says you attended a Devonport football club, but only for the pre-match. Good stay for the whole game.
I stayed for, how long did I stay for? That's many.
Oh, half time, I think.
Yeah, half time.
The result will truly over by then.
As usual.
Uh, yeah, but yeah, it was pretty, pretty obvious to me who was going to come away with, with that knowledge.
Fair enough.
Thank you. Any further questions? Hello? Council Shane declines. They're closed. Thank you. All eyes in favor?
Aye.
Against? Carried unanimously. Thank you. Six point three is the general manager's report. If I could have a moment, please.
Don't move.
Council Murphy and Council Evans. Thank you. Council Murphy?
Uh, yes, ma, it's all there for everyone to see. Has been very busy as you have been, um. And obviously we will receive some updates with respect to some of the conversations with. The Tasport CEO, Juke Russell.
Yes, thank you. Council Evans?
Yes, I was gonna ask if there's any further, but I know there's a lot happening in the shipping space and everything, so, uh. Do I have somewhere for them to park? That's not the technical term, but, yeah, so is that happening? General Manager.
Yes, through you, ma. Uh, that meeting with the CEO was really just a general update that the Tasports. Um, work is tracking as they had hoped, um. Obviously some of the, the T T line and some of the other tenants that have got the, the challenges ahead of them. We might look at listening to it on the workshop next Monday night for an update for councillors.
Brilliant.
And, and thank you. And secondly, um, oh, uh, Grant Gray, you had a meeting with, with him and, um. About what TAFE might be doing in our area is, uh, they haven't done much over the years. It's the places. Needs a fair bit of work. What's the story?
Yeah, through you, ma. So TAFE are currently doing a ten year master plan for the, looking at their infrastructure across the state. And where their future growth will be and that may be was in regard to, uh. Some thoughts around Devonport.
Thank you.
Thank you. Council Hollister?
Yes, there are any discussions of the. Ladies and gentlemen, sit back.
No, nothing further than what councillors are already aware of.
Yep.
Anything further? Council Murphy to close, please.
Consider it closed.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye, aye.
Hello, guys? Carried unanimously. Thank you. Six point four is the monthly operational report. Always a good read. The recommendation is there. If I can have a moment, please.
I move.
Council Hollister, thank you. A second then?
Sesame bit.
Council Wilczynski, thank you. Council Hollister?
It's the usual good report from our staff. I don't think I need to say any more.
Thank you. Council Wilczynski?
Yes, as she said, it's a good read. It's quite intense and, uh, great to. See where it breaks it all down, so very much a good report. So all good.
Thank you. Any further comments or questions from the table? Council Hollister therefore to close.
Consider it closed.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye, aye.
Against? Carried unanimously. Thank you. Uh, we're moving on to the close session. If I can have a recommendation?
I move.
Thank you. Council, uh, Murphy and Council Vani, thank you.
Muted procedure, ma.
Thank you. Council Vani.
Consider it closed.
Thank you. We'll move on in. Thank you, everybody from the public gallery for changing notes. We'll go into close session very shortly.